All right. Good evening. I call the order of this meeting of the Bisbee Arts Commission. Monday, November eighth, twenty twenty-one, five.
Thirty-five.
Five thirty-five, something like that. My clock is not correct on my computer. Five thirty-five P M. First things first, we'll get a roll call.
Jenny Druckman is going to be excused. Juanetta Hill?
Present.
Bill Higgins?
Here.
Karen Schumacher?
Present.
Amy Brett?
Here.
Angela Rockefeller?
I'm here.
And I'm here and Sharon will be here in just a little bit.
All right. We'll open with call to the public. Without any call to the public then, we'll move to item one, which is why we're having this special meeting this evening. Discussion and possible action regarding the following items for the V A C event to be held in twenty twenty-two. Including but not limited to name of event, graphic designer, concerns, and decide what topics to discuss and possible action at the next meeting. I pulled up my file on my computer because we had a few ideas about names to start off with. We had Bisbee Festival of the Arts, Bisbee Celebrates the Arts, First Annual Festival of the Arts, and then Bisbee Elevated Arts Festival. Did anybody have any other ideas since then?
Is anyone here somewhere?
I think I wrote it down on my, I just wrote it down on my own.
Oh, okay. When I looked at different names throughout the country for art festivals, it kind of cracked me up that they weren't very creative. Here they are, art festivals, you know? And I didn't realize how difficult it would be to come up with kind of a fun name. And the one, the only one that really stuck in my mind was Arts Eats and Beats, you know, that's the only one that sounds really like different, but I mean, I'm not saying I want to do that.
Never.
You know, I just had a lot of trouble coming up with stuff, but I do like, when you said elevated, having elevated somewhere in there because we're high elevation, it has multiple meanings. So do we need to have Bisbee in the name? I think, could it be without Bisbee in the name?
I think that it might be important to have Bisbee in the name just because when we're advertising, it's like even if we say Bisbee Arizona after our advertising.
It's just clearer.
It's just really clear.
Okay.
I think that's probably important. I mean, I'm open to discussion on that, but because there's so many festivals and because there's so many festivals on the arts, that I think we probably should include that, especially since we're, we have funding from the city of Bisbee too. Yeah, right now I'm not, I mean, it, you're right. When I looked at other art festivals, most of them have fairly generic names. I, I don't know if that's necessarily the most important thing. I think that you could name it anything depending on what we do with it, but we do need to have something to sort of jump off with.
I think it's nice to have a, the name Bisbee Festival of the Arts, but all maybe some kind of catchy little, you know,
Phrase.
Like a, maybe a catch tag or what do you call that?
A hashtag.
A catch phrase.
Catch phrase, thank you. I was knowing too, I guess.
I did that whole time.
Weird, wilder and wonderful?
Hey, that sounds good.
Bisbee Festival of the Arts, weird or wilder, wonderful? I just, you know, that just popped in my head, you know, I'm, I'm.
Weird, wild and wonderful.
I like that.
W W W.
Weird and wonderful.
W W.
I write that as an idea.
A little catch phrase, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, like having some kind of catch phrase might make up for us not having as creative a, a name and letting the actual name of the festival just be very clear and concise.
It's true. And then depending, of course, on how we advertise it, you know, the visual that we use to go along with it, it'll, you know, push that too. Any other ideas of catch phrases? This one's not great, but it was the first thing that came to mind. Small town, big culture, something like that. Because we're so teeny, you know? I know, it's not easy. It's really funny because you feel like you're cemented, you know, a little bit. But I, I think that's sort of a false, it gives us a false sense of being cemented because we can go any way with it.
So what we basically are looking at is something along the lines of Bisbee Celebration of the Arts, Bisbee's Festival of the Arts.
I'm on celebration over festival.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do too. I'm feeling more pulled to that too.
I had, I came up a whole, a list and now I can't find it, of just words to throw out. As soon as I find it.
Bisbee Celebration of the Arts.
Or maybe it's more like a, an action statement. Bisbee Elevates the Arts.
Hmm, that's a good idea too.
I was asking people what words describe Bisbee for them. And I came up definitely weird, it's eclectic. Still looking for this list. I'll get it in a second.
Well, we think about that, the, the next step, of course, would be to, once we have sort of cemented a name, I mean, we're looking for a boat tonight. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have one. But what we really need to do soon is meet with at least a, a graphic designer or two or three and figure out and, and talk to them and see, A, how much money it's going to cost to do this project? And then also, you know, what their ideas are. And we need to have an idea of what we want to go with them. And so that list of words goes with that, but what is it that we want to convey to the public about? What are we going to convey about people outside of Bisbee about this art community, you know?
Well, the name would help. The graphic designer is some sort of a.
A jumping point.
True. Right now they're all fairly generic. I mean, you, you could go many different ways. I think the most, it's not necessarily my favorite, but the one that sounds the most exciting probably is the Elevated Arts Festival. But, you know, art, we are not a traditional art town, right? I mean, that's what, we don't want to be, we are not, you know, just a place where you come and you look at galleries, you know? I feel like art is very integrated in most of our lives, especially like downtown and stuff, with the parades and all the weird activities that people do. And we have brats participating. We know that because we put it on the same day as them. So we have a lot of, we're hoping to have, you know, interactive art or installation art.
Well, art really permeates Bisbee, like at every aspect of life, you know? Even if you're not an artist yourself, which it's unusual, but somebody actually doesn't create in this town. And it still affects your life. And just even going, go to any shop in town and how things are displayed and how things are, how somebody approaches any of the products that are created in town. They do it in a very artistic, creative manner. And so it's, it's hard to explain to people how that's so different than going to someplace, some other well-known art town.
So we're, we're living art.
Yes.
Saturated.
Yeah. I'm always like, you can't, be careful driving down the street, you'll, you hit a few artists.
Well, what is the community for us? I mean, is it a vibrant, it's, it's very creative, right? It's a very vibrant community.
Colorful, vibrant.
Colorful, yes. So how do you feel?
Inclusive.
Yes. How do you feel when you're in Bisbee?
Like a big hug.
Energized. You know, the thing about elevated is that I was looking up different art festivals and there are several that are called that same name.
Elevated?
Oh, really?
I was wondering about that.
Because I was thinking elevated, but it's pretty, pretty common.
Well, then going back to maybe the most generic of them all, which is Bisbee Festival of the Arts or Bisbee Celebrates the Arts or Bisbee Celebration of the Arts.
Celebration of the Arts.
Because those are all, it's going to be used, but it's not necessarily, it's used over and over again because it's.
True, because it spells out exactly what's happening.
Right. So those all would be good.
Isn't that what we're doing? We're celebrating it this time? And we don't have to have the same name each year, correct?
No, we usually do just so that you don't have to. That idea is that hopefully if you have an art festival one, one year, and then the next year you get, you don't want to change the name because people are going to be like, I want to go to that event, you know? It's just like the chocolate taste.
The snowballing effect.
You could change the catch phrase though.
You could definitely do that. We want to name this, yeah, that will age well. And it's, you know, it's like a balance between being generic and not, and not. So it's, I know it's hard because I looked at different ones too. You know, it's, there are, a lot of them are something like festival, bad festival, I don't know.
It's uplifting. That's, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a Thesaurus for words related to elevated.
No, I'm just trying to think too about, yeah, how to go about it. And Sharon will be here too. Because the other thing, I guess, the next thing is to, you know, meet with that, a graphic designer. What, when you guys envision a, like a poster for this event, what do you think is, what, what is an image that you think conveys these things that you said? Let's see. We could use an art, we could use the artwork of someone in town. We could definitely do that. We could use an image of town. There's, we could use a historical image of town. I mean, it's probably safe, probably safer to stay away from the history part of it, but you know, if you were to think of a Bisbee artist that can, or a Bisbee event, I mean, that would kind of read up to somebody else's event on our poster, but we're looking for like, yeah, an image.
Maybe an image of, like, well, we're going to be having it in Lowell. You know, an image of, of Lowell and the imagined what it would look like on, like, the main festival day.
Or is it now, oh, that's cool.
You know, like brats coming down the street, vendors on the sidewalk, that kind of thing. And I'm, but I'm envisioning something like colorful, hypercolorful. Like Gretchen, maybe Gretchen's.
Collage?
You know?
A collage of artists?
No, I was thinking more of just a, a scene, a scene, a, a street scene. Imagine what the festival would, a manifestation of what we have.
Yeah, exactly. Not like a photo, but yeah, an image of that. Because we need to go to, we need to pick a graphic designer based on, every graphic designer that I have on this list does very different work.
Yeah.
Some of them are very traditional and some of them are, you know, more governmental looking or, you know, and some of them are, I mean, we want something that looks unlike any other town.
So you want something that's lively, colorful, engaging.
That, exactly.
Then I get nervous about the fact that everything I've been taught in any kind of, you know, college course in marketing is saying, you know, keeping things clean and simple and the most important aspect being to convey the information that needs to be conveyed, you know?
That can be a separate, but I feel.
We could do separate.
A good graphic designer too could, could take something messy and make it look, you know, because one of the things that I personally like about Bisbee, the Bisbee Arts, is it's a little bit messy and it's in that sense that it's a little bit subculturally, subcultural in a way.
Exactly.
Because we have things like.
We're not so snooty about the, this is fine art and this is going to happen. It's all.
Right, we're not, exactly. People aren't coming here to go gallery, you know, we're hoping that people will go to galleries and this, but we're really a town that, the artists live among us. You know, there's so many artists here too, they don't even show anywhere. They live here. This is, you know, so it's a place where artists live. And so how to convey that. We're just talking to Sharon. You can meet me.
Thank you for being patient with me guys. I'm really brained to apologize.
It's okay.
It's been a real time and I, yesterday I remembered and today I forgot, so. So the day, okay. Anyways, where are we?
Let me catch you up. So what we're, we have a few ideas. What, it seems that the other members found that most of the names for art festivals across the country are fairly generic. Like Festival of the Arts. We have a few on my list right now. Bisbee Festival of the Arts. Bisbee Celebrates the Arts. Bisbee Elevated Arts Festival, that one was taken by quite a few. Bisbee Celebration of the Arts. Bisbee Elevates the Arts. And so most of them.
Beta.
Huh?
It's the beta one, Bisbee Elevates the Arts. We, we do it after names, never mind, don't worry.
But also we're talking about catch phrases to go with the, yeah, the title.
Right. So even if we had a, a fairly generic seeming title, we could always have a catch phrase that made it very specific. So everybody was thinking about that. And then we listed a list of words of what Bisbee Arts community makes us think of, like permeates, living art, vibrant, saturates, inclusive, uplifting, messy, subcultural, and how to convey that or how to use those words to choose a graphic designer that will be appropriate for that. Because some of the graphic designers on our list are more traditional and some of them are younger and so I think that these things sort of lead us to choosing the right person, you know?
I agree. I have not seen the work that was, the new guy, Joe, this is last one. It's on the list of people that I submitted. I've not seen his work, but it gets suggested to me that he's kind of young and kind of edgy as kind of, you know, if that's the direction we're thinking of. But I think we should try and like narrow that field as best we can in that group and then ask them to do like before, once we come up with a title and, and then see how they feel about it, explaining what we're doing.
And find out what they want charged.
Right, right, yeah.
And even though we do choose a title and, and, and a graphic designer, you know, if the graphic designer comes up with something, you know, we, we can always be flexible about this until it's actually, you know.
Well, we've got to start advertising pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. Advertising needs to start pretty quick.
Well, okay.
So what I'd say, what I would like to do, as soon as we have a title, I, I plan on making a website landing page, which is just like, it's just a landing page. People can get on email list. It's like really simple. And then once we have that graphic designer, we can start adding to it. We already have people who are asking for, they want to have booths.
Yes.
Like I have like three people who are like, I want a booth.
Yeah, and people say that to me as well.
And so we want to be able to have a website where people can sign up to have booths. It's not that, luckily with things like Squarespace, it's all, you can put something together really simply where they can just fill out a form. And that way we can keep track of it. And that goes actually right over to Google, what's the? Yeah, it, it keeps track. I have a Google Docs for you. It's amazingly simple, that part of it.
So I'm glad you, you guys feel.
Yeah, that's really, that's simple. The, the part that is not simple is the graphic design part. And figuring out how to convey what this town is and means to us in that way, you know? Because we can feel very traditional, but I don't think this town is a traditional art town. And so, you know, and I mean, we're just, we were talking as well about like what, if we wanted to put a work, is there an artist that we wanted to use for the artwork? You know, I think that we probably want to stay away from things like Judy Perry, even though she's very well liked, she's very, she's been used a lot by different organizations. And so trying to find the right artist and the right graphic design.
Well, the graphic designer might be able to make the art. And are they doing a, like a little logo? Are they doing a, like a poster design?
Well, we've already got a V A C logo, so it becomes something that incorporates into a logo that we already have that becomes like maybe we, I, I'm not proposing that we consider doing an annual event. You guys will die. But, but maybe it's like, I mean, the two, every two days.
Biennial.
Yeah. So, but as we choose that concept, whatever that is, if it's a Bisbee Festival of the Arts or Bisbee Celebrates Arts or whatever it would come down to, that whatever that, whatever that font, however we decide that, maybe that's something we carry on for, for, you know, obviously the title carries on, so there's then, so whoever this artist is, it's something we're going to want to look at again and again.
So we want something that's not going to age out. So we don't want anything too trendy.
Yeah, not too trendy. Yeah, exactly. Don't, don't let it age out.
Obviously, the artist who did our logo is Bridget. That's always an option. I mean, she does all the city of Bisbee, well, not the city of Bisbee, but the cultural district, all that stuff. But then we, you know, we're in danger of looking like, oh, that stuff. Because every, I mean, every graphic designer has a style. So what I'm looking for is, yeah, anybody who has a strong feeling about, you know, using someone.
Can we get the graphic designer to send some examples that we could?
That's a good way to do it. That doesn't necessarily have to be.
Like a portfolio, just some samples we can, then you can set them out.
And then that way we could narrow it down to who we want.
Just by, just by how they present themselves. That's a nice way to go about it.
I love it. Angela had a great idea that, that you missed, which was to maybe show something bright and colorful with some art that was low old, street, the brats, the booths, the art, you know, all that kind of as a.
Like I had a vision in my head actually, and then I was just, I just popped, not suggesting the artist in particular, but what went in my head. It was one of like Gretchen's kind of murals that's so colorful and it being a vision of what you see it looking like on festival day.
So like, yeah, maybe a.
To project what it would look like.
So I would, I would love, you know, somebody like Jan Searle, but her hand's broken right now. So she's painting, she's drawing with a left hand, which is great, but it's not, not quite the same.
So could we get some samples from that young man artist we were talking about?
That's her designer.
Well, I don't think we get samples from each of them. So right now I have Joe. Does anybody have his last name?
It was on the email that I sent to you, Nina. Do you remember? I'm sorry, I didn't bring my computer with me literally.
No, let me see if I can find it right.
So I have Lizanne.
Lizanne, yeah.
Larry Millam, which I actually thought was a pretty interesting one. He does more like a woodcut looking stuff. Bridget Shanahan. And then Bisbee after five has been using Ally. Sadly, in Bisbee, I don't like anybody's last name. Because that's how Bisbee is. So those are five people. So should we ask those five people? I don't, I'm not so apt to ask them for an example of what the posters look like.
No, it's just their, their personal work.
Yeah, so examples of each of their work.
Right. Because then you get a real feel of what is their preference, what is, right, exactly. How would they like to go about it?
Does anyone know the, uh, muralist that painted the side of the Bisbee, excuse me, so why is their store?
I, I knew, I mean, I, I saw a thing about it, but.
I love that. I know he won Moon here a couple of years ago now. And I don't, I could get his name from Joe, Sean, but I like what he did on the side of their, their store. So that's someone who might want to take into consideration also.
But he's not a graphic designer.
No.
But he could provide art, is that what you're saying, for the posters?
Rojas, Joe Rojas.
Thank you. I could not find it.
R O J A S. And he also goes apparently by Joe Strange. Because if I believe it was Joe Rojas, it says Joe Strange.
Maybe he's a, maybe he's a burlesque performer that he's.
He might be.
So. Why don't we, we ask, I can email these four people and ask them for work.
Yes. And they may also have a website.
Where we could go and look at.
Oh, that'd be good too. They have a link to see.
Let's get that information out and that's a good step on there.
It's like I only have a phone number for this guy. Let's see an email address.
The Joe guy?
The Joe guy.
Can you call him and get an email?
Yeah, I'll, I'll text him.
So we'll get examples, we have five people. We'll get examples of each of their work and so that we can make an informed decision. Does that sound good? And then going back, do we want to go ahead and submit the name then? Or do we want to give the gra, do we want to tell the graphic, I mean, how would you guys like to go about that?
Say that again. Ask that again.
Do we want to have the name?
Do we want, do we want to vote on our?
Do you want to vote on our name tonight or do you still, I didn't seem like anybody feels.
Hundred percent.
No. I mean, and that's because I think right now all the names are fairly.
Monet.
Yeah. Well, the one thing about Celebration of the Arts is that it shows, it sounds like an action. As opposed to Bisbee Art Festival. It's a celebration.
Yeah, it's positive.
Yes.
That's the one I'm leaning towards.
The Bisbee Celebration of the Arts?
Mm-hmm. That's the one I suggested.
I think so. Bisbee Celebration of the Arts, but then we have to have some, maybe underneath something like Bill suggested, wild, weird and wonderful. You know?
I thought wild, weird, wonderful, W W W, about your catch phrase.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, or something like that. I saw some.
Or something like that.
I saw another one that was, somebody else was doing and it was because they were coming back and it was about being after COVID, so they had like three Rs. It was similar idea, like restore and whatever. The other two Rs were.
I love that.
So we're not voting. I just want to take, but I just, who likes Bisbee Celebration of the Arts? Who prefers Bisbee Celebration of the Arts? I'm not voting, just saying.
It's not a vote, you just want to answer it.
Yeah, I just want to see where we're at.
But that's what I suggest.
I'm good with it. I like, ask the justice.
No, I'm just saying, is, is one of, do I need to vote on it?
I just want to see, so what I can see is, could, do you want to vote on it tonight?
I think what we do is we, we come to a, we come to a consensus tonight. Once we have our graphic designer, let's let their minds play with it a little bit too, because we might have somebody who's like a, a wordsmith.
Yeah, smoothly.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
But we should still reach some sort of consensus among ourselves. It's not.
No, I mean, it's fine, but it's not, not necessarily, I don't want to go wrong.
Could you just say subject to change and say this is what we're at, where we're at so far, this is something we.
We can just not vote on it tonight. We don't have to, we don't have to go on it.
That's right. And have by then, by then the, the first meeting of December, then the, to be the sixth of December, is that right?
To vote for the.
To, to actually have by that time, graphic designers too.
So by that meeting, what we need to have is the, all the examples of the work and everybody having looked at them and having made a decision between all of them.
Right.
So we're not giving the fight vote.
Yeah. And then hopefully somebody who works really fast, who most graphic designers do. Because as soon as we have that, we need to start laying out some, we need to start as soon as possible laying out deadlines.
Plans.
This is where we have this. This is where we have this. Because I know things like Sunset Magazine, any of those, you have to be at least, you know, three to four months ahead to even get into advertising. Which means that right now we're okay, but.
But it's getting quick.
Yeah, it's all coming, it's going to all come really quick. And I know this is kind of the slowest part because they're like, wait, what are we doing? So the sixth of December, we're going to have all the examples of the work of these five people. I can give them a basic idea as well of what it will take, which is we're going to need ads in several different formats. And so I'm hoping to also have a basic idea of what they're going to cost, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that seems fine. I think those are both okay. I'm just trying to think about timeline wise, what it is that we, we're waiting, we're just kind of waiting on these two things before we do anything else. We also, on the, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, I don't want to jump ahead, but remember this might be jumping ahead, we need to look at, look over things and make notes. So I looked over and I made a bunch of notes and I made copies of notes.
Yes, I'll be happy.
Okay, I'll pass some down.
I will take one too.
One.
I'll grab one for you.
Thank you.
It's like being at school again. Because I'm at school today.
The middle of the week, like school, somebody asks me, what are?
What kind?
I don't care. You pick it for me.
Did you get one?
Thank you.
What do you want?
Just push your plate over.
Those are nice. Oh, I just wanted you to choose for me.
Oh, well, okay, I'm gonna choose.
Well, that might be jumping ahead, I guess.
No, this is a good layout.
Roll a little. Do you have teeth issues, can they chew eat?
Yeah, do we chew eat?
Are we, I mean, do we just.
Oh, Nina brought us Amy's turn.
I see, I see, but I didn't make the cookies, that's so bad, I, it's on my mind, I was gonna make cookies and.
I.
Look at that.
There are cookies.
It's so nice.
That's not one, it will miss.
But you need more than one.
Um, so Amy's made a list for us about a few different things, all of this is very helpful. What I'd also like to add, I, I had a request from Lori McKenna at Central School, that as soon as we are ready, we need to have a meeting with the community, the arts community, meaning, I mean, I think what specifically she was saying that was nonprofit arts and maybe the galleries.
Yes.
Because she was saying that even though we are not necessarily doing our event in Old Bisbee, it would be nice, she said that she was very open to having a show going at Central School at the same time.
Coordinating things.
And one of the things that she thought that would be very nice, is that since we are having an invitational exhibition, Central School could have an event, a gallery, a show going on that was open to the entire public. Anybody in Bisbee could put their art in.
I like this idea, and I was actually gonna suggest that we figure out a way to do that, because so many people are wanting to be a part of it. We're gonna have to jury or whatever word we wanna say, invitational for part of it. But we should be, have a, have a way that we can include, be inclusive for everyone.
She's very open to that, and so they could have, it's, I don't, I think everybody's been there, it's a very large gallery, so anybody could participate. And they would be willing, they have a lot of volunteer members, so they would be willing to put that up.
Okay.
That way it would make the town feel like everybody was participating.
That make people maybe left out.
Yeah, right, and then the other thing that she had said too was, um, she recommended that they do some sort of installation in their parking lot.
Oh, nice.
So, and it may be not even in town, but in out of town, um, something big and large, so that people, you know, when they got sick of being in Lowell, or that we saw everything, they could go to Old Bisbee and wander around, and if we had a map, um, of all the galleries, and the other art things that are going on in Old Bisbee, you know, to be inclusive of the whole community, so we could get people walking through the whole town.
A schedule of events along with.
Which, which brings up the only thing I don't see, I'm here looking very briefly, Eddie Van Parken, Parkin Ride Bus, you have it, okay. Um, the transportation, can we try to secure, I was thinking if we secured the parking facility where the, where the overlook is into the pit, and then have a shuttle that runs between town, the pit, and Lowell and the pit, and then the, you know, just do something like that.
Mayor, Mayor Bush had recommended that, and they were also saying that there might be pop tents somewhere that did not burn. While, all pop tents burned, because apparently there's this, there's this rumor that they didn't burn, I don't know. And then the city was willing to let us borrow the ones that they could find them, so that they could take that money off our budgets, so they could use part of our budget for transit.
Nice.
Yeah, that was his recommendation.
I can check with Lorena tomorrow to see if they have any more of the pop, if they have, what they have of the pop tents.
The pop.
Right, that would be nice.
And Central School might be, um, one place to catch the bus.
Oh, right, cause it is a pretty decent park.
They definitely want to participate.
Unless the parking lot is used for, like you said.
Well, there's, there's other parking around, uh, not just, not Central School, there's other places to park around Central School.
Yeah.
So, you know.
The buses could just come to that turn, and then back down and go there.
So. I've had in the past.
Guess if you could do the stair climb, you could do anything.
It's true.
Uh, do we, oh, um, nonprofits, we haven't really discussed that in, in detail. Are we gonna have booths available for nonprofits?
For art nonprofits.
And I think there should be shared booths for the most part.
Okay, shared booths for nonprofits, and would that be literature only?
Depends how much they're.
Some, some places have no charge, and it's an information type booth slash nonprofit. And they specify its information only and not really selling an item. So I'm putting that out because those are two types that you may get.
The booths, we, we are not charging for booths, that's what we need to be told the city.
It doesn't really matter if we get any profit.
We might, we, we might be doing the city, we have voted on that, I'm not, I think we did agree sort of on doing a percentage exhibition if we do sell that art. Um, but we wanted to open it up to anybody, any nonprofits in town that were art related, which would be not, um, limited to the Arts and Cultural District, uh, which is also embodies the, the museum, cause it's Art Humanities Foundation, I think that oversees the museum. And I'm not sure, like Artemisia, I'm not sure they're a nonprofit, they're something else, they're a foundation.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they're doing either.
But we were talking about any art nonprofits and galleries getting a space for free if they wanted it.
And I think it should be shared, you know, really, should be a sharing space when they're, when they're doing their nonprofit thing, because it would be a booth for everyone to get to, and give as much as they could, what's going on, so the chorus and, you know.
Cool, the chorus, the museum, I mean, the library.
Play all those, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Um, and yeah, I, I guess it was our intention, when we told the city, it would be free to them. And it's also free to all the artists that wanna participate for the first year.
I'm crossing off fee, I did look at how some other places did get their artists, and they had an application online where the artists had to submit exactly how their booth was gonna be arranged.
Yeah.
And they had to submit like four or five digital images of what they were gonna be having, so you could, you know, if you were way over, you could kinda narrow it down.
We can definitely do that, we only have thirty booths, that's what we said.
But it's like, we have this, we probably could get a few more in that was just Jenny and I going up and down.
On that website, hoping to do everything through a website to keep it.
Linear?
Yeah, we could have a thing where they just download PDFs of their work, and then we, you know, we see how we have, and then we start.
And use it for advertising too. And a lot of people that will be interested in having booths will have set up booths in other situations, and probably have pictures.
Right.
And so maybe we have that as an option, they can download an image, or ask for them to download an image as an example of what their booth setup might look like.
I think that, uh, regular vendors do, but since this is going to be Bisbee and we're highlighting, I wouldn't assume that they have pictures and they've done this before. So, uh, the way that the Mariachi Festival did it, they asked, what are you gonna have in your booth, are, if you're gonna have more than one table, so you've got a, what, a three by six?
I do think that artists need to submit what they're gonna be selling from the booths before we approve it, so that, that's definitely a part of it, so.
Okay, submit what they are gonna be selling, but you had said, if they have pictures of previous booths, I'm not certain everyone will have, uh, pictures of a booth, but they will have pictures of the art that they're gonna be selling.
And we can ask for, say that it's not necessary for real. Um, that's one thing on the next thing, is that I would like, Nina, I need to talk about timelines for that kinda stuff. I'd like to start voting on like the timeline, like when we're gonna put it up and when it's gonna end, for applications for booths, same thing, um, another agenda item that I think is important in this is also deciding on how we are going to do the invitational, you know, how we're gonna go about that. We als, somebody thinks, I'm trying to think about what.
This is, I love that you've put this down so visually, uh, because it does already break things up pretty, pretty well. And, and, and we need to, what we need to do is like divide up the jobs that come from each of these categories, like looking at, at the event, the booths, and all of this, uh, part of it. Some of this comes out earlier, like building walls, by the way, I got, um, I went into the Acacia today, and Dave has, David has three, three standing portable walls.
Oh, he's for free?
David's gonna give them to us.
Oh, he is gonna do it, he has to, he has to be one of them.
Yeah, so I went and looked at them today, and I said yes, because we can use them, so, um, we need to store them somewhere. Nina, know of any place we can store something, or do you think Dave would let us put it in his, under construction space?
He's still building in there, so I'm sure.
Um, how big are they?
They stand about eight feet tall, and they're about, um, five feet long, maybe not quite five feet, but.
Let me see if there's room down in the basement of where we are right now in City Hall.
Okay.
And see if they can go there.
Okay, nice.
And if not, it also might be time to get a storage unit, because we need to, we're gonna go to Charleston.
Yeah, as we start storing other things like our pop tents, all of these things, right.
Which, it's not that bad of a price, considering.
Unless the city has a free, open room they're not using or something somewhere.
I can, I can check, I can check.
Do you think that the library annex might, I know that it's a large space and.
To store.
To store.
They're gonna be a pain in the ass to move, once we move, then we're gonna just wanna leave them till we can get them back, and I'm gonna ask Dave Rose, maybe, that's maybe the best.
Yeah, ask him.
He may have a corner of the building he can let us put it in, so.
I saw he's gonna have shows there before our show.
He's hoping to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Dave, can you use these portable houses?
I'll volunteer my husband to help move and lift things.
That's what we like.
He, he'll do anything I ask him to do.
He's pretty strong too, so.
And that's it, I, I'm just seeing this as a side note too, is that I would like a graphic designer that could put a map together, that's not an easy thing to do.
No.
No, in the style of whatever we choose, so that would be something that we should talk to the graphic designers about as well.
And you can look at other maps of other art things that might help.
Wait, um, oh, and Nina, I'd, I'd like to, um, on the next agenda item, to vote on a date to have a community meeting, I mean, not open to the whole public, but probably.
To the arts community.
To the arts community, so we can talk to people like Lori and the gallery owners and see, and see what they, you know, their input's pretty important.
Okay, so it would be at Central School, is that what you're saying, or?
I mean, we could do it anywhere, wherever, just so that we can have.
Gathering of.
Right, I just need to know the place and the time.
Let's make it at Central School, since they're gonna be offering their space, no, we can't.
I don't think so, I think we're only allowed to have, we're not allowed to have more than eight people in a classroom right now.
How about the library?
How many people is it, we could do it here, there's some chairs.
Yeah, we can do it here.
Okay.
I'll may, I'll see what we can, just, I'll put it on there next time.
Yeah, I'm talking to Lori too, I mean, it's possible, I know that to use that theater, you have to be vaccinated, so that makes it, I don't, I mean, I think, early, but.
But it makes it start complicated with.
Makes it complicated, but I can talk to her too and see, cause I know that they really wanna get involved. But like Bratz, I'd like to talk to them.
Yeah, they're, so these are the people that we want on our list, so if we have this, um, meeting, where did I start to write that down, meeting, okay, so it's, um, let's write down Hoover, Mike, Bratz, Central School.
The galleries.
Galleries.
Library, did somebody say, or what, if they.
I think, um, we can ask Jason if he wants to be a part of it.
Yeah.
He's always helpful anyway.
What about Science Lab?
No. No, um, just since.
The historical, or the cultural district, I mean, the Bisbee Cultural Arts, Arts and Cultural District people, which is the museum. Um, because that's what they're really, their thing is promoting Old Bisbee.
What is her name?
Carrie?
Carrie, yeah.
Carrie Gustafson.
Yeah.
Cause we need to have that meeting probably pretty soon, too.
Okay, so I think that's probably enough in people to put input in, this different, I think that's enough.
Yeah, why don't you get over like twenty, fifteen people, I just heard there's a chaos.
Did you want to include artists from the schools?
Uh, right now, we don't actually wanna, right now, we don't wanna include artists in this meeting.
I was thinking of the art teachers more than the students.
You mean for the event or for this meeting?
For this meeting, I'm just throwing it out.
Oh my gosh, they might have a booth, like the high school.
I think the, it.
We, we can, you know, we can invite them later.
I think we should invite them later, just because it's not necessarily, and I know they're all.
And schedules for teachers is, yeah, they've got enough on the plate, but. But I do believe that we do need to include the art teachers from the different schools, and do, put an exhibition of school art together as well, and that might be even another location, another, you know, we'll see.
We're talking about being inclusive and having an opportunity to highlight some of the youth in the community would be a good idea.
So, um, do you guys, are, do you feel like there are jobs that we can divvy up now, or the, are we still, are we on pause until we figure out the next part of this puzzle?
The timeline, I think, is important, to put this stuff in order of what needs to be done first.
Karen, can you, I sit down and do, we, we were gonna do it anyway, I just, I've gotta, my mom has stabilized, life can get better for a while. But I think you, we were gonna sit down and try and do this last week. I think we can have a time, I think the two of us can pull together a timeline, I've got a girlfriend who used to work at Tempe Arts Festival.
Just cause it takes a lot, yeah, the idea, we, we would just, we'd start the timeline, and we'd bring it to you guys, and we could then look at it, change it, vote on it.
Right, and we can get on it, because we, we are at this funniest part of the season too, we're gonna have another meeting, obviously, but then it's gonna be the holidays. So this meeting that we're talking about, even with this group of people, probably can't happen until we've decided that we're the Bisbee Celebration of the Arts, weird, wild and wonderful, whatever we are, and then have our graphic artists selected, and that's the next meeting, so I'm thinking that this meeting is in January, and then from January, we are a full steam ahead in everything.
Yeah, and so by, we need to have a timeline, yeah, you, we'll sit down.
You and I need to do that, yeah, we were talking about doing this that one.
And then we can bring the timeline to you guys and.
And anybody else, I know it's, it's hard because we're, we can't all get together unless we do it this way. Can three of us be together?
Yeah.
That's not breaking a law.
It's not breaking a law, but just remember, if any of those three.
Listen.
If any of you three, whoever works together, talks to a fourth person, then that is breaking open meeting law.
Yeah, and I forgot, I wanted to mention that to her, I, I forgot about this, but I think you did, you did accidentally. You can't tag a bunch of commissioners on one thing, cause if we comment, we're breaking the law.
Excuse me.
I just wanna, it, it's totally, it's confusing, it's not, but if anybody is on a, if we're all on a post together talking about the Arts Commission, we are breaking the law.
Yeah, and I, I, the reasoning for that was, I was trying to figure out how you guys could share it.
No, yeah, you just have to keep it to three.
Okay.
Keep it to three, and you're fine.
All right.
But yeah, if we discuss things outside of a meeting.
Maybe the idea can be more like of, uh, what they used to do for telephone when school got canceled, is like, I just tag one of you guys, and the next person who shares the post tags the next person to share.
Oh, no, that's kinda.
No, it can't.
There should just be a couple people that are tagged, and then share it that way.
So the two of you are gonna meet up and do a timeline?
We're gonna do a timeline.
We're just gonna start breaking, just because we can spend a few hours doing it, and then we can bring the timeline to you guys and look at it.
At the, at the December sixth meeting, and then, and at that time, we'll have that, and we'll have, I guess we should have a graphic designer, we should.
And I mean, I'm available any, usually time for these extra meetings, if that helps. I don't know how the rest of you are. We'll just go to your house.
No, and that's why, I mean, we can't really, it's so confusing, we can't have subcommittees?
No, we cannot. I know you would love one, but I'm only one person, and they have to be.
She'd have to clone herself.
I'd have to have an agenda, I'd have to record the meeting, it'd have to have minutes.
So that's why we sometimes do these things where we go off, and we just do, we just nail up the work, and we bring it to you guys, cause that way we, we can spend three hours, you know, where we're not making Nina sit there while we're doing it. Um, and then, of course, just to, to say it again, when we bring it to you, it's not solid, you have to vote on it, so then we all can look at it and start changing it.
But it's nice if you email it out ahead of time.
Right.
Through you, because then.
Then you can look at it.
Yeah, and then we're ready to roll, as long as everybody actually looks at it.
Um, so that's what, yeah, so the timeline, we'll vote on the timeline.
All right, so what I have is, um. All right, so what I have is, um, the examples of work you'll vote on, the timeline, um, how you will do the invitational, and vote on a date and place and time for the Community Arts Meeting in January. Is that it, or no? Since I'm missing something.
This is great.
She's amazing.
And final vote on the name.
Oh, final vote, see, I forgot that one.
Yeah, man. Catch a catch.
You only missed it because it was too obvious.
So what I'm going to ask everybody to do too, I know we did a little bit with the other ones, is that now is the time for the next meeting as well, to start looking at artists' work in this town and different pictures and stuff. Because we want to have the examples to give to the graphic designer. So we can use a combination of a graphic designer and artist, or we can use just a graphic designer. But I would really think it's a good research thing for everybody to go look at people's work and say, hey, that's, you know, like, there's a picture of Van Dale sculpture, that would be great, or I'm just giving that, or, you know, a Gretchen Bayer painting. To bring, if you can, or we can email it, and it's nice to have examples, so everybody can look at it and print them out. So that we can, once we have a graphic designer, we vote on them, we can have a meeting with them and say, hey, these, these are what we're thinking.
Let's also put on a list that we're going to start accumulating, since we're going to be doing this process anyways. Everybody just throw all of the artists into a list, and even if you are, even if we're being repetitive, we can let the computer pull out the competitive, I mean, the.
All the artists that you need for the invitational?
Right, so let's start to, to start to accumulate that, that list. I've got a fairly good one started and I will send it to you, Naina.
Okay.
Just so we have this list going, okay, and then everybody, we can just keep adding to it. When we have, when we overlap, we'll, you know, be able to eliminate people, but let's just keep building that list for the time being.
All right.
Um, every artist you can think of, because we're inviting everyone.
Is this invitational just the gallery exhibit, or the booths, or?
No, this is actually, I just put a list of all the artists we can think of.
And that's for the, that is ultimately, we will narrow it down to the amount that we can fit for the invitational. And so what we're looking for in this case, we're not looking for musicians, but we are going to include them in a different way, we're not looking for performance artists.
This is the gallery.
This is gallery, so we're like jewelry, sculpture.
And I don't mind if you want to go ahead and give me performance artists and give me all of them, put them in that category.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, just start making that list of everybody you want to see be a, be a part of this event.
Okay, the whole thing.
Yeah, the whole thing, and we will then sort that list accordingly and get the invitational part of it figured out as well as the.
I'd like to break through.
And we have a brand new area list in town, it was really good.
Yeah, she, you bought the place at the Elmo's?
Mm-hmm, I absolutely love our, they're taking cool classes from me and we're looking, we're going to have like six rooms in our space.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I was thinking, and this is a little bit one off too, is that I did really want to, um, invite people to do a proposal for an installation, at least one installation, Lowell, if not multiple installations, like having art on the street.
Okay.
Installation invitation, so getting proposals.
Well, we talked about the large puppets that Kylie and Kelly are doing, and there are so many things that can.
We have Chico McMurtry in town.
Yeah, that's right, he does that.
Oh, wow, yeah, that'd be neat.
Yeah, that's really amazing.
And I think that we'd have to probably do a, some sort of stipend or something to make it worth its while to move the giant things over here.
And for now, we might then, I'm looking at your list, look for somebody who might sponsor that.
So maybe even like some sort of art, something, some artway when you walk in.
Those really cool, um, articulated art pieces, like the one that crossed the border. Uh, their, their movement, their kinetic, they're amazing, actually.
Did they blow them up with air or?
They were, they had, they had, um, kind of, they were structural, uh, like, like a rector set type thing. And yes, and then they had this other aspect to them that was like a fiber, fabric, yeah.
Just fabric or plastic.
Really cool, plastic or something, yeah, I didn't get to see it in person, so I only got to see it online, and so I'm only guessing what he had. But there, this is a pretty.
I'd love to include him, I'd love to have a proposal for some sort of artway or something to enter.
A portico, huh? Like a portico onto the sleeve.
Yeah, just so that.
You know, and Lowell could use that as a permanent thing.
And a, um, people, this is not as permanent, but, but projection art, I think is really important.
Oh, that'd be fun, for the evening.
Yeah, projection for the evening, projecting on the building itself, to include those visual artists.
There is somebody in town who does that, by the way, and I just have to, all of us have to.
Look at that man.
Well, Ed, Ed does projection, there's a few people.
A few people, so. Wish I had my head on better guys.
So yeah, we have quite a few things to do before, so yeah, so we're going to, you have the list. Work of graphic designers, timeline, invitation, Noel, community event date, name of event, and then I'm going to meet with Sharon about the timeline, we'll bring that to you guys. We're going to look, I'm going to ask for art examples for the graphic designer, and we're all going to come up with artist names for the invitational and beyond. And then, like I said, asking everybody to find visual examples of what they want to convey, art or otherwise. I don't know why I'm taking notes, because you take notes. Your notes are far superior.
And I take notes also, but, but this is, just so we can overlap.
Yeah.
You said visual examples, what now?
I'm asking the commissioners to have visual examples of like artists or art, so that we can, things to give to the graphic designer we select, so we can convey what it is that we want, proposed or locally, to like artists that you like in town or whatever. Sharon, any cookies?
No, I'm just cleaning off the inside of my piece of bread.
There's no reason. Um, so we, so we, we touched on.
Right.
Any other concerns or anything that we want to talk about tonight?
I know it'll come with time, but, um, what is going to be the process for, you know, if we can't have subcommittees? How do we, um, bring in more help to complete all the tasks we have to do?
Um, so what, which specifically, would it, like, uh, the day of the event, or?
Oh, no, I mean, like, I'm just thinking how much actual work it's going to entail in just.
What, what I'm, what I'm imagining is okay for us to be able to do is once that we are on our individual paths, and let's say you're, you know, whatever the job is, you're going to be setting up booths and, and you have people that are coming to help you. Those meetings, and you might have those meetings with more people, don't have to involve Naina.
Okay, like any volunteer you have for whatever your specific is doing.
As we divide up the jobs, so that you guys make your own.
Paying people.
Okay, that makes more sense, thanks.
I know it's, it's rocky.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm still, and I expressed this nervousness when we first started talking about the festival, I was just, you know, not finding ourselves so overloaded, you know, and, and just so you guys know, personally, I deal with some chronic health issues, that when my stress level gets really high, I just.
We're not going to let you.
And so, it's like, I want to be a part and I want to be like a valuable part, but I also need to protect my health.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're going to.
So I started getting panicky, you know?
I'll just give you my husband's number, and you'll all done lifting.
If we start now, which we're doing, and we stay on a timeline, I don't think, it seems a lot bigger than it is. I mean, I think it's big, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, we're not doing, we're not doing, some of the festivals I was looking at, wow, what fun, you know, it's like, oh, I want to go to that one, I want to go to that one, I want to go to that one. We're a much smaller community than many other places that we're looking at who have these festivals.
Yeah.
So it really does make it a whole lot more accessible to us as, as a group to put this on, this time we need. I don't think we need to stress about it.
I know it's, part of it's just a personal trigger, the last thing that put me in the hospital was producing a big show.
You're not producing it, no, no, let that one go, we're just going to.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm not a producer, I'm just one person in the car.
Dividing up, um, individual tasks as we go along, and at that point, we can be very careful about what it is that people are going to do, what they're not.
And you're going to be very honest and say, no, that one's.
Yes, I am, I, I.
Um, the other question I was going to ask you is, um, special meetings. Do you want to have two meetings a month for the first six months?
If you don't hate me.
Of twenty, twenty-two?
Mm-hmm.
If I would?
Twenty twenty-two.
As long as you don't hate me for it.
No, I, what I'm trying to do is I'm going to make the calendar, and with the other committees that I have, I'll see which day I can work it, and then we'll try to make it on a Monday for, since it's.
It's starting in January, probably, every two weeks is probably what we're going to be doing.
So two meetings a month?
Yeah.
Okay. And then for six months, or do you think?
And so how about you really need the time off after we're done with that, just six months, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're going to have a lot, that's the only, I think that's the only way we're going to be able to do it.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure, because I am doing that calendar and I want to make sure.
Can I just suggest everybody, just while we're doing this, once we get to that place where everybody has their assigned job, do the best job you can to keep track of what it is that you did and keep notes, so that we can actually turn this into a manual.
For the next one.
So that it can happen with ease the next time.
And that's the nice thing about doing things through a website too, where it goes to Google Docs automatically, because it'll just save it for us.
Yeah, yeah.
So for example, if somebody signs up to have a booth, it'll have all their information, their every.
Forever.
Yeah.
In the cloud, we'll make a form.
If I start a website, as soon as I have a name, I'll start a website. Um, and I can start a website and just get reimbursed by the city, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's not that expensive.
Just remember, I just have to have access to it.
Yeah, I can get access to you. So, yeah, once we have a name next time.
She doesn't want it.
We'll start a website, what we'll do is we'll, we'll buy the name, and then we'll start a square, a square space account, just because that's the one that I have the best.
Right, okay, good, love that.
Okay, so yeah, I think we're good, I hope now. I'll be with you next week or whenever.
Um, tomorrow, what is your schedule?
My, uh, my closest friend from college is here for the next day or two, so maybe after that, I'll text you.
Yeah, we'll stay in touch, I, I do leave town pretty soon here. Have a family vacation, we better keep your fingers crossed that mom stays good.
So I'll stay, we'll figure it out. Um, anything else that anybody wants to add to this meeting, I feel like we're doing pretty good.
Yeah, I feel a lot, I don't know, we've talked about through, and we feel like we're more on track than I.
And so are we having one Zoom meeting and then one in-person meeting, or what is the best way to do it?
We can just do in-person if you want, that's fine.
It feels like we get a lot more done.
Yes. So pending that everybody is sick or something, we'll, we'll just, we can do it in-person.
Okay.
Is that, or?
The December sixth one?
Huh?
The December sixth.
Do you want to do the next meeting in person?
Well, what I'll do is I'll send out, like, two weeks prior, I'll send out a note to make sure that everybody is still good with meeting in person, and if not, we'll, we'll try to figure out what to do.
Anything else for the evening then? It's Bill's turn.
I moved, we adjourned.
Second that.
All artists?
Hi.
Any days?